Wait a minute, wait a minute. Someone knew a podium. There any? I don't think there are any introductions in.
Who was Alice?
I know I have nobody to eat for anymore.
I know.
Come on.
This guy, Alice.
No, find somebody that is good as her to replace her.
She's good.
Who do you have?
She's good.
Or she can do both jobs.
John doesn't require me.
You can quit your job before you have a job. You can move her before you guys are going to replace her.
Bail me out, Alice. Bail me out. Here, double, let her do the. You can do both, Alice.
All right. Okay. I'm pleased to announce today we are presenting the annual financial report, the CAFER. The CAFER, of course, along with the city budget, is the key financial reports for the city. Budget usually looks at the policies and future plans, while the CAFER is more historical and actual financial results. And it gives you much of the details of the financial results of the city, the assets liabilities, fund balance, fixed assets, budget results, statistical information. So it's a really important document, especially for a lot of our investors. Darrell Hill, a lot of times, says Team Norfolk. And when we do Team Norfolk, when we do the financial report, of course, the whole team of the city prepares and helps prepare the CAFER and goes through the audit with us. And so there's a lot of long, hard hours making sure our financial reports are correct. Jeanette Felton and Tina Weston led the team with finance this year to prepare the CAFER. And I'm happy to announce that Norfolk had a very positive audit result, unqualified opinion with no material weaknesses. So it was a really good audit. And so what I'd like to do is introduce our auditors, Jim Phillips, excuse me, and Cheryl Zystros, to talk a little bit about the results.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Appreciate the chance to be in front of the council. Can everybody hear me okay?
Sure.
As Alice said, I think the key takeaway here, I'll go through some stuff that you might not remember, or in fact, might not want to remember. But it's, the clean opinion is the important part about the audit. And I think just to reiterate what she said, Jeanette and Tina and team were really vital in getting this done. We don't spend too much time up here talking about the audit, and you really can't do justice the level of effort it takes for the whole finance team to pull it together. So we appreciate their work, and we know it's not always an easy process. Just quickly, the presentation you have in front of you as well, I think, hopefully you can see it on the screen. The first part is the clean opinions I talked about. You know, we issued our opinion in compliance with government auditing standards. The A-133 work that we do, Cheryl is going to talk about in a second, that's important. Those are the control procedures we do around federal funds, and that's an important part of the engagement. And we'll cover that shortly. But that second bullet on this page, there's a, what we refer to as our required communications. We gave you a letter that's the formal listing of all the required communications, so I won't go into it in too much detail, but just to talk about a few bullet points. The city's accounting policies are in the footnotes to the CAFER, that's important. There weren't any significant changes this year, but you can always look, there's some pronouncements on the horizon, and we'll change things slightly, but that's there if you'd like to read it. And I always like to remind everyone that the financial statements are full of estimates and judgments. We've highlighted a couple there, but the fact is, there's a number throughout the financial statements that are important. And being estimates, they are subject to change depending on circumstances. So it's always important not to lose fact of that. And then the bottom few bullets there are about, I would say, negative things we have to bring to your attention if they occurred in terms of disagreements during the course of our audit, problematic issues that if we hadn't resolved them, it would have changed our opinion. We really don't have any of that to bring to your attention, so I'm glad to say that. And then always the last bullet, you know, we are independent with respect to the city, and that's important for us under our professional standards. I'm flipping the page, going ahead here. Important in our work is kind of our work around internal control. And we do internal control in a couple of buckets. I mentioned the A-133, but just also, you hear terms significant deficiencies and material weaknesses. Material weakness is what you're really worried about, and that's a deficiency in controls that would keep you from preventing a material misstatement or material error in the financial statements. We didn't find any material weaknesses, and that's the positive. We'll talk about some significant deficiencies, and I always like to point out that the term significant deficiency is a bit of a misnomer here. It's important, but the hurdle is really low under our accounting literature, so significant is not, doesn't always seem significant when you look at what we'll talk about. And with that, I'll turn it over to Cheryl to talk a little bit about A-133.
Okay, great. I'm going to stand over here, I'm a little short for podiums. Okay, yeah, we did complete the audit for the A-133. And the one thing I'll tell you that, we started a couple of years ago providing a little bit of context around the federal funds spent because the single audit for a number of years was significantly impacted by ARA, the stimulus programs that the federal government had in place. And this is kind of the first year that we've come down a little bit off of ARA. So in this audit, there was 105 million in federal assistance, and only 17 million of that was ARA funds this time. We did audit 13 programs, five at Norfolk Public Schools, and then the remainder at the city. And then just as a kind of a reminder of what gets covered, any program that the city has that receives more than 3 million each year in assistance is subject to audit at least once every three years. And we did have quite a few this year that came up in the rotation that were audited that hadn't been for the last two years. And then there's a requirement to select certain smaller programs based on their risk profiles, and those will change from year to year as we work through. We did have six reportable findings that were noted in the A-133 audit. None of these are classified as material weaknesses, which is a great step. And we did have a couple last year and the year before that did have to be. And you've got to remember that in an A-133 audit, the determination of the severity of the deficiency is based on the magnitude of the program, right? So you end up with things that are material weaknesses that maybe in the context of the entire city are not that significant, but because they're significant to that program, it creates that. But we didn't have any this year, so that's good news. The first two items you see on the list are in the TANF program, and those are, that's a repeat finding. But I will tell you, there is great news on that front because those two were both material weaknesses last year because of the number of exceptions. And because of some changes, both in the state and in your internal processes, we had just a couple this year. So they've come down in severity, and that'll get you moving forward towards getting those off the list. The next two findings, and if you want to read these in detail as well as, you know, Alice and her team's responses, they are the very last pages of the CAFER. Okay, I know you all have that electronically, so you can take a look. The next two were in the HIB program. This is a program that hadn't come up in the rotation for a couple of years. And one of them related to just some odd occurrences related to a couple of the reimbursements of subrecipient spending that were just some minor exceptions that they'll work on going forward. And then the last one, the second one, was really caused by just being a little short-staffed in finance and not being able to have the proper segregation of duties around the person who prepares the reimbursement request versus files it with the federal government and hasn't come back in. The next one dealt with reporting in the highway program. This one, I think, will go away. This was a very large ARA program for the city, so, you know, it's something where you're dealing with, you know, some unique requirements that maybe haven't been addressed before, and there were some issues there. And then the last one just dealt with making sure that you're checking all the boxes as you qualify subrecipients. The city was not obtaining Dunn's number from Dunn and Bryant Street, so, in there. So that was the single audit, a pretty good result for this year. We also, as part of the compliance aspects of the audit, have certain requirements that the Auditor of Public Accounts lays out for us, and we had four very minor findings in those that are reported that I won't even go over. So I'll be happy to take any questions, or Jim as well, about the audit.
Yeah, the HIB, go back to that again. Say what you said about the HIB again.
About the findings that we have here?
Yeah, uh-huh.
Okay. The program itself for the city is primarily run through subrecipients that provide the services to the citizens that need them. And there are budgets that are established. And in a couple of cases, the reimbursement request that was filed was not correct based on the supporting documentation, and the city's controls didn't catch it. They were very, very small amounts, and both were unique situations. Like in one situation, there was vacation involved, and it affected what the reimbursement should have been, and it didn't get calculated exactly right. And in another one, there was a personnel change.
And I guess my question, this is for the city and not Ryan White?
Well, it is the Ryan White brand.
Okay. So, and we receive Ryan White of several localities.
Right, that's right. You all are the, you all are the.
Swedish person, okay.
Exactly.
And I guess my question is, is this just Norfolk, or are we held responsible for the localities that we disperse to and how accurate they are?
You all administer the receipt of the funds and the funneling of the funds out to the various subrecipients for the entire area of Hamptons Road. You're right. So you have responsibility over, you know, checking over those reimbursement requests. I mean, I don't, like, none of the subrecipients we tested were, like, I think the other cities are using the same. I'm not exactly, yeah, but yes, that's right.
That was my question.
That's correct. Yeah. Anything else?
Thanks. Thank you all for coming in. Sorry about the delay.
How much did it cost? Five thousand bucks.
Mayor, members of council, it's always a pleasure to be in front of you. It's outstanding news on our FY 2012 comprehensive financial report. I have a brief presentation today on Hatch, which I believe everyone is familiar with. Hatch is a public-private partnership or joint venture with us and some really creative and dedicated folks in the technology and entrepreneurial sphere of the world. What is Hatch? Hatch is a mentor-based accelerator program, again, focused on technology and entrepreneurship. Mentors are critical as they are passionate about technology and growing their own industry. And they provide a variety of services to the, I want to say hatchlings, but to those companies or those individuals that are interested in pursuing companies by providing hands-on experience and, say the hard part, office space, and it's all privately funded outside of the city-owned space on Granby Street. The Hatch Accelerator emerged from Start Norfolk, which was in 2011, and its purpose is to grow and build Norfolk's technology and entrepreneurial community. We do have a very active technology and entrepreneurial core already, not just on Granby Street, but in downtown, as shown in the sampling of companies on the screen here. Cenova is one of the newest ones going in, I believe, the west side of the 300 block of Granby Street. Hatch had its, or the Hatch Accelerator had its first class, if you will, last year, beginning in the summer of 2012, and it graduated all of the participants. And these five shown here are the companies and a brief blurb on the products that they're providing. I'm sure a lot of folks remember Zombie Tag, which is a mobile GPS game, which has gotten not only for Zombie Tag, but for the other hatchlings that have graduated, some national and even international recognition for the products that they've created, which has brought some attention to Norfolk because of our participation in this endeavor. The winter 2012 session, first session ended, the next session began accepting applications back in the middle of November, and that class is just underway, as I mentioned. The city's role is the activation of the former design center right there at the southern end of Granby Street. Our intent is to support this entrepreneurial spirit in the technology industry and to help it not only to retain our existing technology and entrepreneurial businesses, but also to expand them. And view Norfolk for all of its great things, but related to this specifically as a hub, if you will, for this type of energy, which is, adds very vibrant and dynamic environments to our city. As I mentioned before, all five of the participants graduated, and several have set up businesses on Granby Street or just off of Granby Street, and the others are continuing to pursue their space, and we're hoping to keep them here in Norfolk. This last bullet, I think, is really important and encapsulating, if we could, the idea. These folks, their minds work differently. They're very passionate about what they do, and a lot of us use it. It's technology, it's what we've been living with for the past 10, 20 years, and going forward, it's going to continue to be even more dynamic in the relationships between how technology interacts with we humans, if you will. What's the purpose, next step? We had a piloted or temporary entry for the former design center, and because of the success and both us and Hatch wanting to continue the relationship, we're going to prepare a lease for council's consideration for one year for the former design center space. We're optimistic that that will be coming, if not at your next voting session, the following. If anyone has any questions, I'd be more than happy to try and answer them.
Do we provide grants or secure grants for this?
Not as part of the Hatch Accelerator.
Right.
We provide space and connectivity. Any grants would be pursued outside of Hatch. There's nothing attached to Hatch. So the consideration for any monies that would be or could be provided to any of the participants would go through the normal process with the rest of the city.
So what is the goal at the end of the day?
To build upon and grow our technology and entrepreneurial core.
And to build our, to eventually move where?
We'd like them to stay in Norfolk, but because their individual business is their decision, but we believe that with Hatch, we've created an environment in our downtown that has it where they want to be. So we're hopeful that they will continue to stay in downtown in Norfolk after graduating from the Hatch Accelerator, as some have done.
So they graduate from there, and they look for other office space or places to operate in more hours?
The Hatch Accelerator is really taking an idea that an individual or group of individuals may have, and through the mentoring relationships, helping them solve some of the challenges that they have, whether they're funding, whether they're conceptual, whether there are technology glitches, to take them that next step forward. Again, the goal is to build a product and launch a business. That's the goal. Build a product, launch a business, which these are doing.
And keep their business here.
To the extent that we have, saying, absolutely.
What is their commitment to us, to staying here?
These businesses, they are not committed, they're not obligated to stay.
I think it's absolutely great, but, you know, most areas that do this, you know, normally do it in an area where they create a, you know, a business park, an area where businesses can expand, where they can grow, that they're in hub zones and prime zone and enterprise zones, where you hope that the businesses could latch on to resources that would allow them, when it's over, to be able to expand or move or grow within the warehouse area that they're in or, yeah, I just, I think it's great, but at the end of the day, I would hope that we can keep them here.
Absolutely, and you're correct that they would grow, but these, the participants in Hatch are early in that stage. They don't have a business. They don't have a warehouse, they don't have a processing plant. That's what they're working towards. Hatch is putting the mentors together with those that are seeking to build something. What they want to build may not be viable, but through the mentoring relationship, they're creating a product, creating a business that they will then hope to sell. So it's not the first step, but we'll say it's the first step towards opening that business. They leave here, they may find some smaller space, and as their business continues to grow and succeed, yes, they'll need larger space, hub zone, enterprise zone, industrial parks. But I think even with the, particularly the industrial parks, I think the desire is to be in downtown where that energy is.
Yeah, I think to Darrell's point, which is a good one, is that when the city was approached, we were approached with just one ask, and that is, can we have space and can you provide us with internet access? So then you have a group of individuals who are starting to, I guess hatch companies, that actually have mentors within the community. So there is, I guess some people would say that we are attempting to create the soil that will allow this to grow. And because of our participation and partnership, we do believe that, you know, we have examples of some of the, as Darrell has called them, hatchlings have decided to stay here. So I think that when you create that type of environment and that mentorship, and you have the space that's available, I think it's a good product.
As far as technology and some of the riches?
Exactly, right. And the purpose of this presentation is that you will have ordinance, because instead of just having a pilot program, this would be, providing space for the next year. I mentioned at the last meeting, and I believe we started this discussion at the retreat, there have been some terms that have come up, like being more business friendly, and I think that Hatch is a good example, customer service. And we have deemed this concept of smart processing, which David Sullivan's going to speak with you today. I'll say that this is just a piece of it. In other words, how can we make sure that we create an environment where businesses can, one, thrive, but more so than anything else, that we have a customer-focused environment in every aspect of what we do in terms of the city? So David's going to give you an update of where we are in the smart processing.
Thank you, Mr. Jones, mayor, member of council. Glad to be here to talk about smart processing. So I just thought I'd start off and just put in perspective where we're at. What is smart processing? It's basically anything where we can identify a way to improve the customer experience when doing business with the city of Norfolk, or improve internally how we operate. Both of those impact our citizens and taxpayers. So we're looking at a number of processes. Today, we're going to talk mainly about land use and permitting processes, but we're also working on customer-focused services, financial and administrative policies, and business development and retention. All those are part of this smart processing initiative. Again, we're looking at all kinds of things, from our standard operating procedures, using better technology, more cutting-edge technology to help citizens get the services they want. The idea of a one-stop, instead of having to go from one department to another for certain types of things, go to one location and bring the departments to the location to wait on the customer at one place. Customer service standards, so we have some areas where we do really well, we've got some areas where we don't do so well. The idea is to create a consistent environment, a consistent expectation, so no matter where you interact with the city, you get a predictable, good customer service response. We're looking at, of course, small women and minority-owned business initiatives, efficiency, marketing and communications, what some of the best practices are, how we can be more business-friendly. And finally, we want to be responsive, we want to be able to do these things quickly, be responsive to requests, and not have people tied up in the bureaucracy of a government process. And of course, be data-driven and be efficient at the same time. So looking at the land use and permitting process, I want, you deal with this process almost every time you come to a meeting, you deal with somewhere in the step. So you're part of this smart processing initiative, we'll consider some of the things that come to you on a regular basis. But you can see all the different city departments that have input into this process, and there are reasons for every one of them to be there. Information flows by paper, it's slow, it can be, things can get lost. So the whole idea is to look at this process and make it more efficient, more effective, and more customer-focused. So we'll look at everything from the zoning applications and use permits and other things that come to you and the planning commission. We'll look at the whole plan review and permitting process that's mostly administrative, going on in different city departments. And finally, the last step of the process for builders to get his final inspections and certificates of occupancy. So we'll look at the whole process from when they start all the way through to when they can actually occupy their building, open their business. So this, looking at streamlining the process, we put this statement up defining the problem, and, you know, I can read it to you, but it's kind of the duh statement. You know, our processes can be difficult to understand and navigate. I mean, you know, our ordinances are complex, we have a lot of players, there are a lot of applications, there are complex fee structures. So if you're new to the city, it's really overwhelming trying to figure out where my next step is. So our goals are to make it more friendly environment and improve the experience, not only for the business customers, builders, developers that come in, but also for residents who are doing their own work, adding on to their house. We're not just looking just at businesses, we're looking at everybody who deals with this process. And again, we want people to come away saying, hey, we'll come back, we'll do our next project here, because this one was so easy, we got our permits done, it was smooth, we want to stay in Norfolk. And that will help us retain and attract more businesses. Because, believe it or not, people will go to a location where they can get their permit in 30 days less than they can somewhere else, because 30 days is money when you're on a construction loan, trying to get something done. We want to provide the administrative procedures and technology solutions that are efficient, but also customer-focused. Again, looking at it more from the customer's perspective than our internal process. You know, we have lots of good people on the staff, and they're all mean well, but everybody looks at their little piece of the process and how my piece works. Nobody steps back and says, well, what's this look like from the customer perspective? If I'm trying to get something done, what's it, what's it look like? A few people on occasion will experience it on their own as a resident trying to add on to their house, and they'll come away going, wow, I didn't realize it was so complex. So we want to make that process friendly. And finally, there are a number of ordinance changes. We have rules built into our processes that make things more complex than they need to be, and they take more time than it needs to be. Some of those are rules that were built around, one exception that happened 10 years ago that most of us can't remember why that rule was put in place. We want to look at those rules, that'll take some time to do that comprehensively. But again, making common sense decisions about what rules need to remain, and we have a good reason that they're there, and then which ones can be streamlined or completely gotten rid of so that they're not in the way. So in order to look at this, we decided that we can't look at it internally. We had to go outside and ask our customers, as well as our staff that are doing the lion's share of the work, not just managers like me who touch the process at a meeting occasion, where people are actually doing the work. So we did, we did three things. One was we formed a focus group with real estate professionals, developers, builders, contractors, architects, and engineers, those people who deal with the land use and permitting process. And you can see a list of some of the folks who participated with us in that. We also worked with the Tidewater Builders Association, and they did a phone survey of their members, asking questions about the city's process, how they felt it worked. And finally, we did interview kind of large set of focus groups around the staff that actually handle it from the city's side. We wanted their opinion, and in many cases, all three groups reached the same conclusion. Some things are just harder than they need to be, and we need to simplify them. We got mixed findings from, some people said we were really good in some areas, and some people said we were really slow in some areas. So we did get some very specific information, and moving forward, we plan to meet with these groups quarterly to see where we're at in the process, if we make changes. Is it any better? Did this change actually help before we jump on to the next project? So some of the recommended improvements, we're going to look at some technology upgrades, and I'll talk about those in more detail in the next slide. We're going to create a one-stop service center for getting development permits, land use and building permits. We're going to provide some communication processes, because one of the main things we hear from our customers, we don't know where my plan is, I don't know where my approval is, I'm not sure where it's stuck in the process. And in some cases, the communication loop was back to the consulting engineer who submitted the application, and the property owner never got the loop closed. So we're going to look at our whole process to make sure we can do a better job so that everybody's getting the information, they can. everybody's getting the information, they can check online and see where their stuff is in the process. If there's a holdup, they'll know where to go to get that knocked out and along. And again, looking at completely redoing our website, our website doesn't have a lot of detailed information about the process. We've looked at a number of others. Chesapeake actually has a very good website for that, and we heard that from our customers, so we went out and looked at their site. But again, having checklist so people know exactly what's expected, how much time it's going to take to have it through.
Be careful copying other cities' websites.
Yes. Yeah, I'm well aware of that one, but thank you. And again, yes, thank you. We want to, and it says improve customer service standards, we don't really have a standard. We don't have a published standard that says, this is how we answer the phone, this is how we greet people when they come in. So we're going to create those standards and then work through a process. Almost 5,000 employees, it's going to take a while to get people trained on a consistent customer service. But today, we do not have a standard. Some people do an excellent job, some people don't. We don't have a standard to hold people accountable against. So we will create that and begin the process of getting it implemented. Again, that constant communication, letting people know where they are, if you're stuck, why you're stuck. We also want to review and update ordinances and fees, and mainly the fee structure. It's not really the amount of the fee. The amount of the fee that gets charged is your policy decision of what you want to charge for a permit or a plan review. The problem we have today is the structure by which those fees are implemented are so complex that the average person can't figure out how much they owe if they're coming in to get something done. So what a number of builders told us that they don't like doing is they send a runner down here with a blank check with a signature on it because nobody's sure what the amount is until somebody sits down with the plans, the complex fee schedule calculates the amount and tells them how much to write on the check. There's really no reason it needs to be that complex. That structure can be simplified. Whether we raise or lower fees is a whole different question. What we want to focus on is the structure to make the fees understandable so you know how much you're going to pay. And then we'll set the rate to whatever the policy rate you want to set it to. Again, our one-stop shop, we're looking at setting that up, being done on the fourth floor of City Hall in the summer of this year. So the idea would be to move codes folks so that everybody can come in between the fourth and fifth floor, you can basically get done what you need to get done. We'll have somebody from utilities in the room, they can pay your utility, tap fees, line fees. Again, the idea, and if you come in and we need somebody from public works or another department, we'll bring them to you rather than sending you up there. And again, we have a whole series of internal work groups that are working through, looking at our processes and revamping those to make, just kind of taking away the stuff that, you know, every, you know, when you see a group of employees, everybody knows dumb things that are asked to do every day, just a lot of people never bother to ask them, you know, what are the stuff that you have to do that doesn't really make any sense? Well, we're asking that question. We're also looking regionally. Part of the shared services initiative was to look at an approach where we can have, say, some common information because a lot of these builders, developers do the same business in all the cities in the region. So the idea is to get it more uniform so you can do the business and it works similar. We're also working with code officials and IT officials in Virginia Beach and Chesapeake, looking at whether we can share the same computer information system as opposed to everybody buying something different, being different across the board, so that you can do things online and it works the same way here as it does somewhere else. Your codes and ordinances will be different, but at least the process will be similar. On the technology side of things, we're installing a point-of-sale system in planning so that you can use your credit card to pay for a rezoning, additional use permit on the sixth floor of this building. We hope to have that done this month. One of the things we heard was people need to know information about their permits associated. So Norfolk Air, which is the address information resource, so it's our online property database, is getting a major upgrade, and it will now have over 200 data elements for every parcel of property in the city, including all of the current permits and code compliance issues and historically the last three years were permits and code violation issues for every property. We put on the slide February, but we're actually going to launch that this Thursday. We're done. It's going to go live Wednesday night late, and it'll be on the website on Thursday. There's about 50 new things that we're doing in there in addition to the permit information. So those people who use that product a lot, which is mainly your real estate community, they will, they will see a big benefit. Electronic review and submittal of site and building plans, we have a pilot going on right now where we can take a digital drawing instead of a paper copy and review that and move that around the organization rather than working on paper copies. Sounds like something we should have done 10 years ago, but it's never too late. So we're working on that. And again, getting to the point, and a lot of our builders and engineers are really applauding because it's, it's really expensive to make lots of copies of building plans. Again, looking at a regional systems analysis, we're actually having a meeting later this month with all of the city IT from all Hampton Roads, all seven cities, looking at what we can do to create possibly a common portal where people could come in and do simple building permits like roofs, vinyl siding, and those kind of things in a real simple, straightforward manner. There were a couple of policy improvements that planning had identified and we've talked about. Some of those are some of the special exceptions that we have where we have things like a change in manager, I know you are all familiar with these, a change in the floor plan of a restaurant. So technically, if the floor plan was approved with all four tops and somebody comes in and you move a bunch of tables together for a big group, you're actually supposed to get a change to your special exception. And change of certain entertainment restrictions. Again, trying to get these down to a more, those that can be helped, done more administratively, get them off of your agenda, allow people to move forward a little quicker. And again, there is a balance there of setting what you want to look at versus what's purely administrative. But most of these are routinely approved. In fact, very few exceptions where there's an issue where they're not approved. The question is, do they really need to go through this whole process of advertising, setting meeting agendas, and moving forward? So those are some of the policy improvements. Again, the next steps, we're just finishing up with, you know, trying to get the one-stop implemented here at City Hall. Our webpage, we're looking at those things probably in March, have all that done. This analyzing ordinances and fees is something we'll work on for a, for a number of months. It's not an easy fix, it's going to take a lot of work. And again, we're trying to get those that are the easiest to do, call them the quick fix, get those taken care of, and the tougher ones will take more time. Meet quarterly, again, with our stakeholders to make sure we're on track. And finally, get this customer service training implemented and started throughout the city so that, so that it's a little more consistent when you deal with the departments. So that's the end of my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Just have, that's the front of the house, behind the house, we've been talking about a portal, you know, when you list those developers, builders.
Right.
Now, there's a piece that I would hope that you would incorporate, and that's how we collect the money that they owe.
Right.
And that's, when you talk about connecting our computer system, being able to, I mean, we do it manually, now we got an agreement with planning or zone, if a guy comes down and which we shouldn't have, we, that should be all a part of that presentation as opposed to somebody looking manually, checking to see what they owe before they get their permit and hoping that whoever that person is that they look at that information, making sure we get what is owed, close that loophole as well because we...
And we do, as you, as you well know, we're working with the treasurer's office and the commissioner of revenue on a, an entire portal.
Yeah, that's a front of the office.
But the backside of reconciling, getting the amounts in and processing that. Yes, we'll look at that part.
But that's millions of dollars.
You say what they owe, isn't he something that's owed debt?
Yeah, we, you, we did a snapshot in the last couple of years where, you know, there's millions of dollars that we could be collecting by integrating the computer systems where they talk to each other.
Well, you're talking about past time, what are you...
Yeah, I mean, if a guy comes in, you don't know if he...
He's going to build a, new house and owes.
Right, you don't know if he was...
If your link went on so much.
Right, so you never catch up with him. And then if it's, depending on what the money is, whether it be a personal property, you know, falls off the book after certain, after five years. So it's just a way that, no, we're talking about customer service on the front end, but on the back end, I think that, you know, the computers need to talk to the various departments. Whereas, you know, it raises a flag where that, whether it be utilities or whatever, you're able to capture that money, you know? Because, well, like I said, I mean, that, that's important, that's millions of dollars.
Definitely add that, because we are working on that, it is something we've been working at, but I'll definitely add it to our, to our smart processing.
David, about the SWAM initiatives, how does that work?
We haven't looked at a whole lot at the SWAM. We know that that's an area we want to work on. We haven't got to that one yet, but I don't know if Mr. Jones wants to comment on that. I mean, you know, I mean, there are a couple of issues. One is helping small minority-owned businesses get a foothold in Norfolk. The other is helping them get a piece of business with the city of Norfolk. So there are two pieces to that, and we're looking at both these.
Because, you know, we've had the courthouse, aquatic center, schools coming up, the Amtrak building, Slougha Library. So we have great opportunities for small and women-owned minority businesses to participate. But the door seems to be closed, so I hope it's something that we can, you know, mark this.
Yeah, I think that's the, being able to hook those hooks up with the opportunities, and then let them stand on whether they compete and get the business or not, but at least get them hooked up to the opportunity.
Well, that's what I asked about last week, it's called that diversity study.
Right.
And that costs about...
Well, that's, yeah, they're kind of identifying whether you want to set goals for how much participation you want to have.
But that allows you to be able to work more freely with those, those businesses, whether it be veteran, women-owned, minority disenfranchised businesses within your locality. The issue is, is that that diversity study costs us about $182,000,000, but once it's done, you know, it gives the city the ability to be able to do that. So until we do that, we won't even put a crack in this.
When you say the study, what, what do you...
It has a study that we would have to pay for to have done within the city to, to be able to do that.
So it pretty much looks at all the different business categories, who participates in them, and identifies those areas where there's more minority participation than there are others.
I'll get you to it.
Yeah, it, you know, ideally, it would be a regional study because it is a regional marketplace.
I understand the goal, I just, I think we know that there's not enough participation. I couldn't, isn't that something we could come in, in-house rather than paying on...
$180,000.
No, you, you would have to actually get the study done to be able to take advantage of, the way I understood it, to be able to take advantage of being able to go directly to businesses and from a procurement standpoint opposed to, because if you don't, you can't just go and say, this is a woman-owned business, this is a veteran business, I want you to do this work. I think that there's a process that you have to go through as a locality.
But if, I guess, I guess it's a couple of like bucks, $182,000. But if, we know that we have five projects coming up, you know, we have schools coming up, we have the Amtrak Center coming up, Slougha Library, we missed on the, on the Aquatic Center and the Courthouse. So if we can, whether it's in the Washington Post or New York Times, or just through word of mouth, let, let people know what we're getting ready to do, and we are interested in doing business. One thing that we've never done is set goals, and maybe localities can't set goals by, you know, by law, whereas maybe HRT set goals when it came to the tide and, which was, you know, is a regional authority. So I don't know, can we set goals? Can we say that, you know, when we, when we start building schools that we want, our goal is like 16 to 25% minority participation, or can you do that on the locality?
And I won't mess this up and get into the, the legal realm. When we have a, let's say, a request from the code, it's clear that you can set goals within that, that you would say that we're going to rate a particular RFP that comes back in, and there may be, you know, a, you want to have 20% participation from small minority women-owned businesses. I think it's very different when you're just talking low bid. So I think that's something that we've been discussing, what I think that we have been discussing with the city attorney's office since it was brought up this fall to see if we can just find a way to actually not just say that we want to, to have this type of participation, but actually do it.
Yeah, we've been here before.
I think you can't have goals, right? You can't have quota system.
Right.
I just want to thank the city manager because I know you have been talking about this since you came on board, and it's really, really good stuff. I mean, this is great. And even last night, John Morseberger and Sherri Johnson did another presentation to the Ward Five Advisory Committee and about codes and how you're tracking data, and they, they have requested for them to come back because they enjoyed that presentation so much a year ago. And in that presentation, they still are admitting, you know, that we're working on how we do things. But what was interesting was the feedback from the citizens in the room that were saying how much they've noticed changes when they call the city for assistance, just with customer service, how they're responding to them. It doesn't seem like it's a bother anymore when some citizen calls, and everybody's been very helpful. So, and I've expressed this to you, that just as a councilperson who was used to receiving at least three or four codes complaints a week, the fact that they're rarely coming in now is, I think, a result, I believe, a result of the changes that you guys are making and that, and I know we appreciate it because that takes a little bit off of us, but it's good work, it's just good stuff, and this is what the citizens have been asking for, and you guys are making it happen. So thank you for doing that.
Okay, David, thank you for an excellent report.
Thank you, David.
Thank you.
Very, very good.
Yeah, and as I mentioned earlier, Mayor and members of council, I believe we've been talking about this issue for a while, maybe even almost a year now. Senior Disabled Tax Relief, which we have, we have one of the most generous programs in the region, maybe even in the entire state. And over time, as real estate assessments increased, what occurred is that the city provided more relief. And as we look back the last few years, and you have seen a decline in assessed values for the last three years.
And in the tax rate.
In the tax rate, yes. You have not seen a change in any of the parameters for the Senior Disabled Tax Relief. What Sabrina is going to do is give you a recap of a little bit of what I've just said, but also provide for you a recommendation from the administration that addresses, we believe, in part, some of the issues that came out around this table. And that is situations where we would have 100% relief for, you know, homes that were valued in excess of $600,000. And we're trying to find a, I guess, a, some type of balance where there is relief provided for those who need it most, but also there's an alternative that would allow the city to keep a balance with the revenue that's, that's coming in, the revenue that's going out in terms of a, I should say refund, that's, that's being relieved. So with this, Sabrina?
I think you did have the presentation already, so we can probably skip to, no. As he said, we are trying to strive the balance with this program. This program has grown over the last 10 years, it's quadrupled from 2.1 to over 7.5 million, and it's doubled in participation over the same, same time period. We are generous, as he said, we are second in, among cities in the, in the Commonwealth in providing this relief. As a matter of fact, we are, with the exception of Virginia Beach, we are the locality that provides more than $4 million in relief. Every other locality in the Hampton Roads region provides $4 million or less. Virginia Beach, I believe, provides about 14 million. But there is one aspect of this presentation, of this whole population that we have not really discussed, and that's a program that began last year. Put on the veterans' slide. This program began fiscal year 2012. It was enacted by the General Assembly, it was a constitutional amendment. And what this program does is it allows veterans who are disabled, who have 100% service-connected disability, to qualify for 100% property tax relief. In 2012, this population was about 500,000. In 13, in 2013, it's about 520,000. We expect this population to grow, being that we're in a heavy military area and we are right now seventh in population in the nation for veterans. This population of our program will just continue to grow. In speaking with Newport News last week, they actually have experienced a $200,000 growth. growth since the previous year. Now, what this legislation does is also, any surviving spouse that's a widower of any disabled veteran that died on or before, on or after January 1st, 2011, is also eligible for 100% relief. At any time throughout the fiscal year, this population is not subject to the eligibility requirements, the income, net worth, or even the timeline of our current senior tax program. So they can walk in the door at any time, present a letter from the Department of Veterans Affairs, and they can receive 100% relief from the date of that letter. So we have no control over this program. Department of Veterans Affairs makes the determination. So thinking about this, plus our generous relief package, has led us to where we are today in coming to you and saying, we need to restructure this program, because it is just, it's become unsustainable at the level we have and with the revenue losses we have.
So the surviving spouse can live in the home, and it doesn't matter how other, how many other working relatives live there also. Household income is not a factor.
It's not a factor for our program.
As long as the property is in the surviving spouse's name, and she's not remarried, he or she is not remarried.
Correct. Our income eligibility requirements have no part in this. It is, as long as they come to us with their veterans' letter, we have to give them 100% relief. And there is legislation going through the General Assembly that's actually taking away the January 1st date. So anybody even prior who was killed in action or disabled prior to, I mean, killed in action can get the relief in their surviving widow, widower.
That should are a refund.
No. No, it's from the date of, when, when the determination is made.
So how does that affect the January 1st date again?
They might take away the January 1st. Right now, if it's a veteran who died on or after January 1st, now what they're saying is if this legislation passes, is if a veteran who was determined disabled died even previous to that, the spouse would be eligible.
Okay.
So the capacity for this population to grow is very, is very large. Especially as it gains popularity and knowledge is more out there. People are just coming to understand this program.
Okay.
And the reason, I think, last year when we presented some of this, we didn't have a good handle on it. We're just coming to understand this program. So if, just a quick recap of where our program stands now. You know that we have five income relief brackets. You must be at least 65 years of age. Our maximum income limit is $67,000. Our net worth limit is $350,000. We do exclude the first $10,000 of our relative's income. We do exclude the first $10,000 of our disabled owners' income. So when we restructured, or looked at restructuring this program, we kept a few guiding principles in mind. Mr. Jones would not let me gut the program, as he kept telling me to be nicer as we were talking this through. And I will tell you that we went through various iterations, and there is no good scenario that we can come up with that does not change the status of someone. We tried to change the income levels. We looked at the federal property level, which right now is about $43,000. There's only $5,000 less than, I'm sorry, $23,000. It's only $5,000 less than our $28,000 100% bracket, and that knocked 800 people out of the 100% bracket. We tried the net worth. We tried to include the assessed value into the net worth calculation, and that, that didn't really have an impact. It only, you know, if you wanted to use net worth as, to change the variable, you really have to change it to the, to the bottom end of the scale. There really was no good way to achieve what we wanted to do by stemming the growth of this program, but protecting our 100%, which was our target population, our 100% exemption folks, the folks who really need it. What we've come up with is, we're going to introduce three things in this program. One is the $5 million cap. We're going to say that the total program cannot exceed $5 million. Second, we're going to introduce the averaged assessed value into the calculation, because we don't believe that you intended to exempt a high-value home in this program. We believe that you did intend to provide relief to the people who need it at most, which is why we're going to target the 100% exemption folks. And we are, there are some things that we are not doing. We are not playing with the net worth, as we said. We are not taking away the first $10,000 exclusion of the relative or their disabled homeowners. And we are not including the income of non-relatives in the household. And we're not including the income, the home value in the calculation. So there are certain things that we didn't do, which, again, is your prerogative to make us do. We can consider that. We believe the program that we're presenting today achieves both results, is protecting our most vulnerable citizens, but also keeping our revenue base stable. So how does this program work? So we're going to introduce the averaged assessed value into the calculation. That means participants who qualify for the exemption can get the exemption or relief up to the averaged assessed value. The 2013 average assessed value right now is 203, 386 for the homes. We also looked at the median assessed value. The median assessed value was about $165,000, and that, it was a little bit too low. So, and in that category, if we use the median assessed value, the highest tax relief that they would get is about $1,800. So we said, we're going to go with the 2,200 relief. So the folks that qualify for 100% tax exemption will continue to get the 100% tax exemption, but now they will only get it up to 2,000, 2,200, basically. So if you look at that first row, where it says 0 to 28, 611, we're not changing any of the income brackets. What we are saying is, you still qualify for 100% relief, but you can only get it up to the $2,257. And we're going to work through some of these. So how does this fit for our revenue? We believe that we can contain this program within, let's just say, $4.5 million. We set a $5 million cap. If you look at that first, the first yellow column, the 100% relief folks are still exempted, and they total up to about $4 million. There's 218 of that that's deferred, and I'll get into that a little bit more. That's because of the exemption cap. Those folks are about $4 million, and we say there's about $500,000 for veterans. Veterans are not in this, veterans. And then it gives us another $500,000 for any growing population of veteran, or if we need to make some more adjustments. That's how we get to the $5 million cap. So what does this mean for our participants? In the 100% bracket, that first row again, we initially had about, based on the August data that we have, we had about 2,400 participants in that category. But 21 of those, 2,100 of those folks will still get the 100% exemption. 312 will now get a partial exemption, and that's because they're hitting up against that averaged assessed cap. And on average, those folks are going to have to pay about $700. But even then, we said, okay, they might not have the money, because they might be really needy. We're going to give them the option to defer that $700. Anybody that's making below that 28,611 100% bracket, between your 80 to your 20%, has the option to defer their relief amount.
Let me ask you this question.
Yes.
Okay. If you have someone, because we're using an average, so we're using an average of 203,000 is the assessed value. If you have someone whose property is assessed at $230,000, and so then they would only, they would max, they would get the maximum on this, on the exemption, and then the difference they would either have to pay or would be deferred.
Right.
Are those individuals able to still apply for a correction on their assessment? If they feel like their property is over assessed, based on the condition and, you know, whatever else is going on? Are they still, are they going to be able to do that?
I believe so. This doesn't touch any part of the assessment protocol.
Are you going to explain the deferral part later?
Sure, or I can do it now if you have questions.
Okay, well, if I have deferred, if someone has deferred, how long is that deferred?
Until the sale of the property or the transfer, the ownership of the property.
So either, I guess if they die, then it'd be an ownership change or, or the sale. Now, that would be due in full at the sale.
Yes, the way that Newport News does it is, and I think most of the localities do it, is within, within the year, if it's air property, they have a year to pay back the owed taxes.
If you left it to your son, at that point, he would have to pay.
Correct. Correct.
And is that deferred amount, is the $5 million, does that include the deferred amount?
No.
Or just the year, so that's kind of sitting back down in a savings account somewhere.
Received.
The what?
Received. Well, it would be out there that's owed to us. Anything's deferred.
It could be 10 million deferred, I mean, 10 million worth of tax relief, of which $5 million were deferred, I mean, round them. So it doesn't help our cash flow necessarily. Well, I mean, it will...
He's capping the budgetary deferral on a yearly basis.
That's right.
The deferrals that may accrue over time from the tax relief is a rolling number.
I understand that.
And will not, does not apply to the cap.
That's right.
The cap is just for its budgetary purposes. This is all we're giving out this year. This is all we can afford, $5 million.
So that's actual plus deferred, it's going to be $5 million?
No, to separate the two.
Right.
Okay, so...
The, okay.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
I guess, I'm sorry, to that point, and I think this is right, so I think it's, if you look at this to simplify it, it's three new points. So it's the same program that we've had for a while, with its different tiers, 100%, probably the other 20. So if you start off and say, the first difference is, we're going to cap the average assessment. So in other words, and no matter how much your house is worth, if it's over 203,000...
I understand how we get to what we're going to do, but if that, but each year, you're not really capping it by me.
We are. If, for example, assessed values go up over time, a decade from now, and even that median assessed value goes up, you would never go above the $5 million cap. What you would do is start to prorate the relief. So instead of being able to get, you know, so you would never go over the cap.
But the $5 million cap does not include deferred?
Correct. He's correct.
So there might be $7 million of relief, $5 million, which is capped for the year, but $2 million would go into deferred to be paid at a later date. But that doesn't help you, I mean, you're still not getting the money now. Eventually, you will.
Right.
I understand that, but it doesn't help you year to year necessarily.
Well, and there's the example of...
Well, I mean, it does, because it could keep going up.
Right.
There's going to be some people that hop out of the program, because they don't want to do the deferral part.
Right, right, I understand that. But still, you don't, the net bottom line to the city could be affected by more than $5 million that year.
It could be. But I guess what I'm suggesting is, if you just use the Newport News model, and they did this, what, 18 months ago, year and a half ago, the first year, 50% of the people dropped out of the program.
Okay, and if you, if we're trying to, if that's what's going to happen, that's fine. I mean, it, well...
I have to tell you, landowners, I mean it.
The cap, but I don't think you get to $5 million.
But the part of the problem that you have is that when you start talking about taxes being deferred on a property that has a mortgage on it, which some of these people may still have mortgages on their property, no lender is going to allow a deferment of taxes that turns into a tax lien that trumps their mortgage. So you may have people who dropped out. They may not have dropped out voluntarily, but they dropped out because their lender...
And they do that after the fact.
Newport News has run into this, and what they do is they tell their folks upfront. It's on their application that says, you must contact your mortgage holders if you are going to participate.
That's going to probably eliminate people.
And that's what I'm saying, is that their mortgage companies will not allow, because the tax lien trumps their mortgage lien. And so it, they're not going to allow their homeowners to participate.
I understand exactly what you're saying, but if the mortgage...
We also, we did do a very preliminary run at mortgages. There's about 611 people that have mortgages. 230 of them are in that 100% category, from what we can tell. Now, how many of those are in the 312? I don't know. But the percentage is not that great that have mortgages currently. And to answer Councilman Wynn's answer, question on reverse mortgages from the prior session, the reverse mortgages are not counted in this program. They're considered a loan, so that income from the reverse mortgages is not counted as income. Now, the state of Oregon has actually just passed legislation this past year to disqualify anybody that is a reverse mortgage holder from participating in a senior tax relief program.
Disqualify.
Right. Right, because the reverse mortgage becomes first lien at that point. And then by the time the house is sold, even if it's under value, the mortgage holder then takes a loss, and the city no longer gets the money. So the state of Oregon has disallowed that.
Taxes are ahead of them.
Taxes ahead of them.
Taxes, all right.
That's why they, that's why they don't want to let them get in it, because they do know.
But I think your reverse mortgage is considered first lien.
In Virginia, the taxes are ahead of...
Taxes are first. Anybody.
Right, in Virginia, yes, so they, yeah, that's why they won't let them do it.
But in Virginia, they head up and on a reverse mortgage. Does that change anything in Virginia?
We'd have to check.
But was...
If, if you have a widow in a home, and the widow or widower participating in the deferral program, the house is in their name and they pass away, there's a, whoever is going to receive that house lives in the household as well, and now they're 70 years old, and they are entitled to the program. And let's just say, for instance, if the surviving spouse has been in the program for five or six years, and it's $3,500, $4,000, what happens if the second person is entitled to that? Do they have to pay that before they actually qualify?
I believe, I believe what happens is a change in ownership is what triggers it.
Whenever it changes ownership, even if the person who is in, who is the new owner is entitled to...
Yes.
Or eligible, should I say, for relief, they would have to pay the previous amount?
I believe they do. And then the tax relief would start again if they qualify.
Right.
With this change, with this change in, in the program dynamics here, and that we, it's now the city administration that will be administering, it'll be Steve Hawkes and Human Services, we are also saying that the affidavit process be suspended, and everyone apply again to qualify and make sure that we have a new set of books for Steve Hawkes. And just to go back on the deferral process, on the deferral, there is also a 3, 3.5% interest attached to that per year. That's how it is currently. We haven't changed that. So, so just to, if there are no other questions, I'll just sum it up. Is, is real estate, real estate is our single largest locally regenerative revenue. Our senior population is expected to grow at least by 30% over the next 10 year, 10 years. That along with the veteran population that's expected to grow, there is reason to stem the growth of this program.
The only thing I would ask is that, I mean, the requirements in terms of affidavit, no affidavit, qualifying, bringing documentation, they have changed a lot over the last couple of years. And we're talking about people who are senior citizens. I mean, there are a lot of senior citizens who are up on it. I mean, they, you know, they have their act together, they are in charge of their business. But we also have a lot of senior citizens who are not. And they may not be functionally literate, they may not, you know, so we tell them they don't have to have information. Last year, they did, this year, they don't, next year, they do. I mean, and we got phone calls this year, because things, you know, started changing, that we just make sure that we let our citizens know that, you know, that here's something else that's changing. Because change is easy for someone in my generation, some other generations are, they don't adapt as easily. And, you know, we are maxing out a cap of $5 million. So if someone doesn't completely understand what their responsibility is, and they don't have children, or, you know, things like that, other people to help them, that they're not penalized if they've been on the program. And, you know, I don't, I just don't want to see them fall through the cracks, because we're making a lot of changes in a short period of time, from one year to the next. And... in a short period of time, from one year to the next, and it can be confusing for our senior population.
I totally agree, as a matter of fact, that's one of the conversations we had with staff. What we would be asking of council would be an ordinance the next time you meet, because the way the process goes is that, in the past, the applications start in March, and if we had a favorable response from council, the most important thing for us over that next thirty days would be public outreach, and to explain the changes.
Especially to the folks who are already in the program.
That's right.
To, to let them know, and that's a, that's a fairly finite group of folks that we can get to, that we ought to be able to communicate with, Angela, I think your point's really well, well made. I do think.
So you want to do this this year?
Because what occurs is that, for the FY fourteen budget, that begins July one, the senior and disabled tax relief program is before that, the application process begins in March. So to impact the FY fourteen budget, it would be an application process that begins in March of this year, we get it all sorted out by June, and it goes to effect in July.
We get all this, we get it all sorted out by June, but if there's required to start paying real estate taxes as of the July one quarter, is that the way that would work?
It's September.
September.
They would have to pay in September?
September.
So if we had someone who did qualify, who did qualify, and now they don't qualify, and they are on a fixed income, we're giving them less than, what, maybe ninety days to come up with three, or four, or five, or six hundred dollars? And then they have to come up with it on a quarterly basis?
That happened this year, people, right after drop over down, people that were in the program were no longer in the program.
Yeah, but they, they start calling us.
Yeah, they start calling you, but some of them, uh, uh, you know, had to find a way to pay. Everybody didn't, uh, didn't meet the cut.
But most of those people were people that could have, could afford that change, right?
No, that was not, no, that was not the case, you have people that have been on that program for ten, twelve, fifteen years.
But weren't they?
I think it's a short period of time.
Were they people that were?
I just think it's a short period of time to, for, in, in, in the economic climate that we're in, to ask senior citizens to have to come up with that kind of money in a short period of time, and then expect to have to come up with it on a quarterly basis.
I think the seniors know that those people are, because they were told even last year that the program. But even though they're coming to the level of whether or not they can pay these different issues, they can defer.
Okay, well, I think it's a, I know you've done your homework on this one, Marcus, it's been a program that was getting out of control, I think it was even Mr. Riddick who brought it to our attention very early on about the, some of these issues, so, yeah, let's let it go. I mean, I don't, I'm not sure there's ever a great time to do this, and this is as good as it is.
That's tough. And I, 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 I've even shared with manager that, you know, I would go as far as doing intake program, I would, you know, you got about four thousand people in the program, you know, it's worth trying to get out in front of this thing and see them, find out who's sick and shut in, and find out who those people are, if you have to make some type of house visit to find out who those people are, to qualify these people that are in the program. You got some folk who are not sixty-five that are receiving, you know, I mean, you got all types of things, so you put your eyes on somebody, to understand who it is, you know, let them know what the program, ask pertinent questions, like, do you live in the house, or do you just own the house?
That's right.
You know, so I just think that all that stuff is important. I promise you, we won't be at that, won't get near that five million dollar cap now.
When Newport News went to this, I mean, like, half the folks dropped out of the program. There are a lot of people don't live in the city, that, I mean, there were, anyway, I mean, I, I think we'll find that we've done ourselves and the rest of this community a good service.
I just hate to see people, what I saw this year, we had good people that deserved this program, that because we had to cap it, the people that really needed it couldn't get it. And so that's why I say it's important that we weave the, you know, uh, you know, weave through the program to really make sure who, who needs it gets it.
Are you gonna go back to those people that were cut off and let them?
They, they, they needed to have to apply.
I know, are we gonna make sure that they know that they can reapply, I mean, these people know they can?
Go back two years with the people.
You will have a big outreach, because as Sabrina said, the moment that you take the affidavit process out of this, some folks believe that they wouldn't have to come back for two years, that just a signature would do it. We have to start from scratch, it's a, it's a new program.
Okay.
Mayor and council, it's just two quick ones that Frank has, because there are two items that will be coming up in two weeks, and we'll be finished with our presentations very fast.
Uh, these will be very quick, they are both two applications. I don't know where they were moving. Sabrina left with her remote, you're gonna have to change it for me. Uh, two items, they both have the same applicant, J. Mayor Construction, one is a rezoning on South Side at eleven oh-two to eleven oh-eight Wilson Road, thank you. And because both of these have negative recommendations from the planning commission, we wanted to, to work two things. Okay, this isn't working. Uh, the first one is the rezoning, the property is currently, it is located at the intersection of Cologne and Wilson Roads.
Cologne.
Cullen?
Yeah.
I was giving it Filipino pronunciation. It is currently zoned C-one, and are, what they want to be able to do is change that from C-one Limited Commercial to R-nine, or one-family residential, in order to do three single-family homes here. If you go to the next slide, this just shows you the aerial of what is happening in the neighborhood, and what you do see is this is largely a single-family neighborhood area with some commercial on Wilson. If you go to the next slide, whenever we have this situation where people are asking for a zoning change that is a smaller lot size than is typical, the average lot size in this area, it's in our eight area, would be fifty-foot lots, bless you, what we do is, we go through and do an analysis to see what is the prevailing lot pattern in the area. And in this case, we always do the analysis in two different ways. One, we look at all of the residential properties within a thousand feet, and then what we found is that over seventy-five percent of these properties are greater than the lot size that's being requested. Uh, so we would, our initial reaction would be, this is probably not such a great thing. Then we look at the lots on the same block, to see if on this block, we're getting a different answer, and we got essentially the same answer, sixty-one percent of the lots on the block are actually meeting the R-eight requirements, which suggests that the R-eight is the correct zoning designation. If you go to the next slide, this is a graphic that shows you exactly how this breaks down. All of the parcels that are in yellow are the residential parcels where you have five thousand square feet or more. Parcels in blue are the smaller than five thousand square feet. And so, based on that, if you go to the next one, um, at the public hearing, the proponents included the applicant, a rep, a representative of the Campus Delicacy League, and one citizen spoke in support, there was no opposition. Now, if you go to the next slide, you're gonna see that the staff's recommendation was a denial, and that was based on the review of the lotting pattern in the area, we did work with the applicant, we asked him if he would make this a conditional rezoning, so that he would commit to the layout of the lots. He refused, we asked him if he would look at a conditional rezoning, so we would be able to look at the home that would be built on the lot, he refused. So for that reason, and in, in combination with the existing lotting pattern in the area, the staff recommended denial, planning commission also recommended denial on a three-three vote.
Right, we asked him to do what and what?
We asked him if he would make this a conditional resume, if he would proffer some conditions. We asked about looking at the lot layout, so that we would be able to get something when he begins replating this, re-subdividing the lots, getting something that would be mortgage keeping. He refused. We asked him if he would commit to allowing review, the city through our, our design people, not going through the whole design review committee, but the internal design people, review something for consistency with the neighborhood and the design of the houses. He refused.
Is, is this the first attempt by this contractor that he's refused to try to, you know, follow the format of the community, wasn't he out in Titus Town in the same thing?
We're gonna have the one in Titus Town, it's the exact same issue. Uh, he, he actually did this in three parts of the city in December, uh, this one in Campus Della, then one in Titus Town, that's the next one I wanted to share with you, and he also tried doing this in Fairmont Park. Fairmont Park, it got continued at his request, but the neighborhood has said vehemently, no.
Yeah, I, I, I personally, I would not support this now. If this campus specifically, the, the proponents, I, I don't know how great that is. The citizen is my good friend, Roscoe Callaway, who's, which called me right after the planning commission's denial of this, and after looking at it, you know, I, I'm in support of the planning commission. And so, you know, I don't think we could let a contractor come in and won't even give any consideration, you know.
That was exactly.
Yeah, you know, so I mean, they can't come and run roughshod, you know, over us, and you got another two that he's trying to do the same thing over.
This is a big precedent.
Where specifically they were opposed to?
No, they support. You know, but you gotta look at, you know, you know, you gotta capture the thing.
Their support was based on the idea that they want this to become a more residential area.
Yeah.
Right.
But the issue is, exactly as Mr. Riddick is suggesting, the developer was unwilling to do anything.
Okay.
Uh, the other one is also by J. Mayor Construction, and this is in Titus Town on Hugard Street.
Hugh Art.
Hugh Art, I've been given so many different pronunciations.
It's Hugh Art, I used to live there, it's Hugh Art.
Everyone I've talked to has given me a totally different pronunciation on this, on Hugh Art. So I, um, this is an area, again, it's zoned to R-eight, it requires a fifty-foot wide, wide lot. Uh, Mr. Mayor has acquired a lot that is thirty-three feet in width, and this is the house that he proposed to put on this. Uh, this is a garage door, a front-loaded garage. And he went through our design review process, the narrow law process that you created, which says if they do something in keeping with the character of the neighborhood, he could get this approved. Well, he went through that process, we denied it because of the front-loaded garage, if you would go to the next one. Uh, it was denied because of the front-loaded garage, what we looked at is all of the homes that are in the area of following the standards, only one of them, or two of them, had a front-loaded garage. Ninety-one percent of the homes here do not have a front-loaded garage.
Where is the garage?
If you go back one, this is the garage.
No, 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 I mean, if ninety percent of them don't have a front-loaded garage, where is the garage?
That's why I'm asking, where is the garage, because those lots are narrow as can be.
And what you find is, some of them have parking to the side, that is, the majority of them. Almost two-thirds have parking to the side.
Right.
A little over ten percent have no off-street parking, um, another ten percent have the parking toward the rear. But what is the, one of the issues that we're required to look at by council, or by ordinance, is where are they parking, and we're looking to get that in keeping with the character of the neighborhood, and the front-loaded garage was the issue for us. So we were recommending denial because the front-loaded garage is simply out of character with the area. If you go to the next one. Um, well, that was actually the, that was actually the applicant's position, there is no character.
There's a lot of different, there, there are, no character is a bad word, there's no consistency on that street. There's a lot of difference, there's houses made out of tin foil, and then there's houses made out of brick on that street.
When we're talking character, we can't look at the architecture, we can't look at the material. Uh, what we're looking at is the placement of, of the house relative to other homes, the, the location of parking, the, um, the pitch of the roof, how the door is, does it address the house? The, is the, is this a neighborhood where you have all slab-on-grade construction, or do you have a raised first floor?
So if he made the garage just a, let's say he increases the square foot of the house, buy the garage and just made a front parking, that would be okay?
I would have, that would be a non-issue, but he says he wants to have the garage. This is opposed by the Titus Town Civic League, um, they expressed concern that Mr. Mayor, his representative showed up at their Christmas party without any kind of appointment, and demanded that they support it, and so they unanimously voted you two opposed. And if you go to the next slide, we're recommending denial because it doesn't meet standards for a non-standard lot in the city.
You can go, Mr. Holmes.
And the planning commission recommended denial because of the opposition of the neighborhood in combination with the design that's at our.
So the other one was three to three, the same people, I assume, voted, but that's because Campus Della Neighborhood Civic League voted in favor of it.
Correct.
Well, that's kind of not consistent.
So what, what was the deal over Campus Della again?
Um, it said that they supported it, but I, you know, just kind of, I, I, I'm just wondering how much participation you had.
The deal with Campus Della though, is that he wouldn't give, he wouldn't proffer anything, and then he wouldn't even subject his renderings to the city at all.
Well, he's built right about, right across from Campus Della Elementary School, I mean, uh, Early Childhood, all those houses back there.
What, across from the Early Childhood Center?
Yeah, there's a street where the guy had built about five or six houses there.
Mr. Mayor has built a number of homes in the city.
And then on right across from Diggs Park on the main drag.
Yeah.
Built two, three there, so.
He just had to come up with a larger, you know, more for less, you know, you know what I'm saying? He's gonna have to give us more house, and, you know, maybe two homes up there, as opposed to trying to squeeze, squeeze three in. And I would prefer the homes facing Cullen Avenue versus Wilson Road. You know, if you turn them around and let them face Cullen Avenue, then try to get, because all of the homes are facing Cullen Avenue.
Right.
You know, so I will, if, you know, give me two, you know, fifty-foot lots and face Cullen Avenue. The electrical exchange is now closed, so eventually, I would imagine that that property is gonna be demolished and, uh, and, and made for homes, you know, for building.
He built some nice homes over, over, uh.
Yeah, he needs to come over there and give us some nice homes.
He, uh, he, he's, uh, he, the product.
He has done some nice.
Yeah, I, 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 I'm telling you, I was, I was impressed with, you know, when you, that street, he, like I said, he transformed that whole street. And then, like I said, he got about two on, right directly across from Diggs Park, he got that one that you just showed there, that's across, so I mean, he, uh.
Is it, is it, uh, the width?
Yeah, he's not, he's not been our homes, these are, I mean, these are nice homes, I mean, the guy, yeah. No, these are, these are thirty-seven and a half.
Those are the ones, he has gone through the narrow law process on a number of other homes.
But these are regular-sized lots.
A number on standard lots.
I mean, he's somebody, I mean.
That's what I would like to see, come in and be consistent with the neighborhood, if they're fifty-foot lots, then that's what he needs to do.
And, and as Mr. Riddick indicated, I had suggested if we could get a subdivision plot that would commit to doing them off Cullen.
Cullen, yeah.
Then that, because it is relatively close, almost forty percent are the smaller in the immediate block, that's at the point where, where if we could get some concessions, I think staff would have been comfortable recommending approval.
What, what kind of concessions they want to get, but, I mean, he puts some stuff.
What we were looking for was, would you show us how you would subdivide the property? He said no. We asked him, would you, would you let us, I mean, he just said.
I don't know, I mean, I said, I'm just looking at the houses in the builder, but I didn't know, you know.
But how you gonna do that?
I wish, what's the, what is, how much land is?
Representative ought to get together.
He's not enough to do three if he goes to the R-nine, the narrower lot, but he only can do two under R-eight.
And what is, it's currently R-eight now?
Right now, it's C-one.
Oh, okay, and he's asking for?
He's asking for R-nine.
R-nine.
Which would give him the ability to do three, and he's not willing to show us how he's going to do the three.
Correct.
You're saying he's bought the parcel?
I don't know if he has bought it or if he only has an option.
Well, I'm just saying, if the parcel is one by one, because he can't just buy it and divide the lot himself.
He can, as long as he will meet the, the requirements for R-nine.
If it's one hundred by one hundred, then he could only build, and he bought it.
If it's a hundred by one hundred, he's never gonna get more than two.
Right.
But this is large enough where he has the potential to get three houses on it?
It doesn't matter how, what the potential is, but again, how, how, if, if it's.
And that's the whole issue, he would not tell us how he would, would subdivide it. But I'm cooperative, Mr. Vice Mayor.
I'm just saying, he couldn't subdivide it by himself anyway, you guys got less than missing something.
He has a right, if, if.
You don't have a right, you guys, the way you guys set it up, unless you're telling me something different.
No, he has a right, would have a right to subdivide this in any way he wanted, so long as he met minimum ordinance requirements.
You can't take, you can't take. You can't take a, you can't take a hundred and twenty-five feet by one hundred and decide you're gonna build a twenty-five foot lot and two fifty-foot lots.
That would not, he couldn't do that, but when you got a hundred and twenty-five by a hundred and twenty-five, you can subdivide that into three forty-foot wide lots two different ways, one of them would be more in keeping with the area and one would not, and that's where we run into the problem.
Forty foot is not a problem.
It's just out of character with the neighborhood, it's much smaller than the other lots in the neighborhood.
Well, me and Barney would have our verbal joust, we thought thirty-seven and a half would be, I thought thirty-seven and a half would be something that shouldn't have to come, but, because that's more than enough.
All right. I'd like to see what the car, you say he built a house that looks like that?
He's built, I'm telling you, the guy built a nice house.
I mean, with the garage in front like that?
Yeah.
I mean, it looks, that looks.
I'm telling you, it's, it's, but the whole thing is not the garage, but he made the, their white part.
That part.
This right here is, I mean, the garage goes up, I mean, the picture, you can't really tell the picture here, the garage door, this, and he has this, these kind of wood shakes here, which is highty play, I mean, it looks, I'm telling you, it's, it's, it's a neat product, you got, I mean, it's a different style, it's got wood shakes, it's used good product. That picture doesn't do it justice.
I think the Southside representative need to caucus on this issue.
You know, that puts the car first and the people second, you got, houses should have people first and cars second, but anyway, that's another.
What else we have?
It's not good.
Are you sure? All right, is there anything else for the good of the order that anybody, I know we didn't do council concerns, but we, manager had a very lengthy meeting for us.
I do have a council concern, Dr. Whibley and I have been discussing with some school board members about trying to do a joint Saturday-type retreat with council, it's a little bit different than what we have, and just, not to discuss now, but something to think about, about really digging in, and I believe also talking about what Mr. Riddick brought up about neighborhood issues, kind of combining that together, to just think about it.
All right, anything else?
We could have discussed it in committee, by the way, and just.
Okay, we're gonna stand adjourned, thanks.